Good afternoon and welcome to the March Meeting of the Pitt County Planning Board. We welcome those that are in our audience and those that have joined us on TV. So appreciate your being here at this time. Mr. Tab, would you call the roll, please?
Brett Austin.
President.
Don Brown.
President.
Diane Bub.
Here.
David Davenport.
Here.
Thompson Fords.
President.
Lyman Hardy.
Here.
John Landren.
President.
Steve Litt.
Here.
And Charles McGowan.
President.
Mr. Chairman, we received notice that RJ MB will not be present today.
Thank you, ma'am. And again, I appreciate the board being in attendance as we go into our agenda tonight. At this time, though, would you please stand with me as Mr. Lyman Hardy, Allegiance and Prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mr. Charles McGowan.
Let us pray. Our Father in heaven, we thank you, dear Lord, for this beautiful day. We ask, Lord, if you to be with this board tonight as decisions they have to make concerning the citizens of Pitt County. Give us wisdom and knowledge to make the right decision. In your name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice and tolerance.
At this time, the Chair would entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes of our February fifteenth meeting.
Seventeen seconds.
I have a...
Should we move Don Brown?
I have a motion, but not Don Brown, and a second by Lyman Hardy, that we approve the minutes of the last meeting. Any corrections or acknowledgements? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed? The motion is passed. I don't have any names listed right now, but at this time, I will open for public addresses to the board. Are there any public addresses to the board? Hearing none? I declare this public address to the board at this particular time. Administrative matters. Mr. Roots?
Good evening, everyone. Just wanted to make you aware, as is listed in your agenda package, that one of our members has offered her resignation. Tab is already working with our clerk to the Board of Commissioners to have that position filled, so maybe by your next meeting, we will have Madison's position filled, and you'll be back to a full board complement. So it's underway. Thank you.
And we do appreciate the service that Madison did provide for us while she was here, so we thank her for that. As we get into our rezoning request, I believe, Ben, you're going to be sharing with us, right?
Good evening, everybody. We do have several rezoning requests this evening. The first one has been submitted by Shannon Hodges. This is a request to rezone 9.28 of her acres of property located on the southern side of US thirteen. It's the use of intersection, use of its intersection with Moy Turnage Road. It's parcel number 68999, and the request is to rezone from rural agricultural to general commercial conditional district to allow operation of a self-storage warehouse facility. Location of the subject property, you see it's right there on US thirteen, kind of between the town of Farmville and the city of Greenville, just right before that cutoff for thirteen heads towards Green County. A few pictures of the subject property. This is the site, looking at it from US thirteen. This is looking west towards the town of Farmville, and then looking back east towards Greenville. The, some adjacent pictures of adjacent property. This is agricultural use right across the street from the property. This is a single wide that's located on the subject property currently, and then this is an adjacent residence just west of the subject property, and that is the residence of the applicant. You see here, the Comprehensive Land Use Plan does designate this property as rural residential agricultural. This designation is intended to include low-density residential, single-family site-built and manufactured homes, agricultural, forestry, churches, very limited commercial, office, or public and institutional uses meeting locational criteria. The locational criteria for non-residential uses within this land category would include frontage and access to a major state highway or secondary road, location at a major intersection, proximity to similar uses, and spatial separation from non-compatible uses such as existing residential development and land uses in this category would be developed on private subject tank systems. The existing land uses in the area, you see a majority of agricultural or undeveloped land, as well as some residential in the immediate area, and the zoning for the area is all RA currently rural agricultural. The general commercial zoning district is primarily intended to accommodate a range of retail, service, office, limited wholesale, and moderate-density multifamily residential uses in areas that have access to major thoroughfares and the necessary utilities to support such development. And the conditional zoning district allows for the approval of a proposal for a specific use with reasonable conditions to assure the compatibility of other proposed use with the use and enjoyment of surrounding properties. And again, the proposed use for this request is a self-storage warehouse facility. The sketch plan that was submitted with the application, you see, we've highlighted the area proposed for rezoning with the red dash there, the proposed drive and parking area, and the proposed storage buildings at the site. Planner staff does find that this request is consistent with the Pitt County Comprehensive Land Use Plan. The area requested for rezoning is designated as rural residential and agricultural on the future land use map, and there are existing general commercial zone properties and commercial land uses to the east of the subject property near Ballard's Crossroads. And Planner staff also finds that this request is reasonable and is in the public interest because the site has frontage and access to a major state highway, US thirteen. In addition, the proposed use will not generate a significant amount of traffic and has spatial separation from existing residential land uses in the vicinity. So staff does recommend approval of the request with the following conditions: No zoning compliance permit shall be issued until a site plan prepared in accordance with the dependence to be of the zoning ordinance is submitted to Pitt County Planning for review and approval. A landscaping plan is required, and the property shall be screened from any adjacent residential use and public road rights away by a ten-foot-wide landscape buffer yard planted in accordance with the requirements of Section 10H of the zoning ordinance. Required parking spaces, access drives, and loading areas shall be paved and maintained with concrete, asphalt, or similar material of sufficient weight and thickness and consistency to support anticipated traffic volumes and weights. A soil erosion and sedimentation control plan prepared by an engineer shall be submitted for development of this property that results in land disturbance over one acre. The site must comply with the Pitt County Stormwater Ordinance for nutrient control. Nutrient loading and peak flow calculations shall be reviewed and approved prior to any improvements involving more than one-half acre. Must comply with any emergency management requirements for fire protection, and they must obtain all required permits from Pitt County Inspectors to occupy any proposed structures and comply with any applicable environmental health requirements for wastewater disposal. And finally, they must obtain a driveway permit from NC DOT and comply with all requirements for access to the subject property. The board will now entertain public comments. After that, the planning board will make a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners, who will, is currently scheduled to hold a public hearing at their April third meeting at six o'clock. At this time, I will turn it over to you, Chairman, for the public comments.
Thank you, Ben. And I noticed we do have some that would like to speak toward this, so at this time, I do open this board up to public comments. And I believe the first name that I have on my list is Charles Vanderford. If you'll come to the mic, and just let me remind all of our speakers tonight that we are limited to three minutes, when you come to the mic, that you state your name and your address to the board.
All right. Good afternoon to you. My name is Charles Vanderford. I live at sixty-seven twenty-two, let me re-correct there. I have a dwelling, land ownership, right across the road, sixty-seven twenty-two, US thirteen, farm from North Carolina. I'm a disabled veteran. I've been with the Department of Correction, probation parole for twenty-six years. I'm looking to retire at this dwelling that I currently own. I have lived there, owning off, the last fifty years. It's always been residential agriculture. I'm looking to keep it that way, so I oppose the business being there. Why do I want to oppose it? In short, I have safety concerns. Business of this size, being right across from where I plan to have my family, my friends come over, this is just not new, any run-of-the-mill, small business fruit stand being out there. You're going to have crime. I haven't seen any proposal to address that. Traffic, there's a curve right there in the dwelling, right there, a major curve. There's been major accidents right there coming in and out of my driveway. I have an eighty-four-year-old mother that lives right beside me, or right beside the property there. She can't even get the post office to have the mail delivered to her house because the postmaster said it's too dangerous for their drivers to go in and out of the driveway. All right? So it's dangerous there. No turn lane proposal, none of that's been addressed. Traffic is going to increase. You look how many units were proposed there? Twenty-four-hour operation, that's a lot of in and out, a lot of in and out traffic. The environment, as far as I've been told for the last fifty years, I spend a wetland area. I don't even know how it can be proposed to be done this way anyway. All right? Last thing I will leave with respectfully, would you want a mini storage building aside your residence that you have owned the last fifty years and that you plan to retire at? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Vanderford. You'll have to forgive me. Mr. Lenwood? Lenwood? Lenwood?
Mr. Stroud. Oh, okay. I didn't know if I turned yet, I'm sorry. Members of the board, thank you for this opportunity tonight. First thing I would like to do...
Would you mind stating your name and address also?
Oh, I'm sorry. Lenwood Stroud. I'm with Stroud Engineering. I'm the engineer representing Shannon Hodges, and I will be doing the site plan and the other engineering tasks associated with the property. There was a concern by the previous speaker about traffic. I contacted DOT to get their projection of the traffic, this type of facility would generate peak hour traffic, PM, twelve trips in one hour, six in, six out. According to the current zoning, we could develop ten residential lots on this parcel. Ten residential lots would generate eleven total trips, seven in and four out, so it's approximately the same thing. Regarding the wetlands, we have had wetlands delineated on the property by a qualified soil scientist. None of the development that we are proposing is within the wetlands. We are avoiding the wetlands, so it will all be on up them. It'll be a fenced facility, it'll have a gate, it'll have security cameras, so, you know, and it is in compliance with the land use plan for limited business. So this is, this is type of business, it's about the most limited you can get and still be commercial. I will defer the rest of my time to Mrs. Hodges, unless you have questions.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Are we going for or against the proposal?
He's for.
Is everybody down? Are these first people for? Last one also?
The last one was against.
Okay, so we just do either one?
First speaker was against.
I would like, I would like to offer one other comment that I had forgotten about, but I did meet with DOT on the site regarding the driveway entrance. Gene Pittman, he was concerned about the site distance, but when out on the site, at the location of the driveway entrance of this property, the site distance was well over twelve hundred feet, which was in compliance with DOT requirements for site distance for an entrance for a facility of this nature.
Thank you, Mr. Stroud. And you mentioned Ms. Hodges, I think she's requested right now, she'd like to go last, and right now, I have a Mr. Humphrey that would like to speak.
Good evening, board members. I'm Blaine Humphrey. I own, my wife and I own a lot that is directly across the street from the Hodges property, and I want to speak on behalf of my mother, who also owns the property directly across the street. I am against it. I think the world of Shannon and Stacy, but this is not a good fit for this area. I could see doing it in the Ballard's Crossroad area, which is what the rural commercial district was set up for. I remember twenty years ago, when I was sitting on that side of the board, and we were going through this process, this was the primary goal of what that was. I also gave you a handout, kind of briefly go over what I had come up with. I know Mr. Stroud had addressed the traffic count. I guess based on what I've researched, using a ten-by-twenty unit, at a minimum, you could probably come up with six hundred and six units for the property, and if you go by the Institute of Traffic Engineers, eighth or tenth edition, we could go with the tenth edition, which is, I've included both in the packet that I gave you. You're looking at probably a minimum of a hundred and three trips per day based on that information. I know a firm, I also work for an engineering firm, and recent designs by our firm had about thirty-six percent of the acreage developed with units, which is, I think I had figured roughly thirty and forty, but going with the minimum, it would probably be more than that. And it would also be a sixty percent increase in impervious area. As far as site distance, I've also put in here, you know, Charles had expressed a concern about the curvature of the road, and that is a concern, because I, I know I and my mom, when we're pulling out of her driveway, you really got to watch what you're doing. But if, let's say, the site distance that I put in here, eight hundred and thirty-six to eight hundred and sixty-three feet, and I've also put pictures in here about where the driveway would be, and the distance, site distance, what I would consider would be clear sight distance, and you could be looking at a reaction time of a little less than ten seconds. And I think we know nowadays, with distracted drivers, that could be an issue. As far as, I know it's said in the, in the slide before about US thirteen, that is acceptable, but if you look at a major thoroughfare, that is trying to move traffic through urban area and not a resident, I mean, a rural agricultural area. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Humphrey. Ms. Shannon Hodges.
He'll call you at the end. Hello, my name is Shannon Hodges, and I just wanted to thank you for your time and consideration for this project. If you look at this, can I see this? Can y'all see that map?
There's a little trend.
Okay, awesome, okay. So if you look at the black arrow, this is, that little red and black dot is my house, which I think Ben showed you in the previous slide that he did. The storage facility is here in the red. The first white line to the left is Charles Vanderford's mother, which is six hundred and twelve feet from the driveway. The one to the right of that is the Humphrey, Blaine, who just spoke, twelve hundred and fifty feet. Ms. Humphrey is the next white mark, which is thirteen hundred and sixty feet from there. The one, the next one is eight hundred and forty, which is, I think, a rental trailer. And the next one's eighteen hundred and sixty-five feet, and the one below that is the lady who lives behind, that's twelve hundred and thirteen feet. And if you look at those white lines, there is a wood line in between all of those properties except for that little trailer. So they can't really, I mean, yes, the facility's going to be large, and it's going to be there, but we live next door, and I love all of them, and I'm going to make sure that looks This is our home, which will be nice, right next to the facility. If you look at the second picture, you're looking down where the facility would be in that wood line, which would be cleared, and the facility would be there. And Ben showed you those other pictures across the street, and as you can see, there's, you can't see any of the houses that are near there. And that last, this one up here that says twelve hundred and fifty feet, that's where Blaine's property is. You know, I love them, but they've been planning to build there for twenty years, since I built my house there, and they've not built yet. The next slide is all of Pitt County storage facilities in the area. If you see the yellow star, that is where this facility would be, which is very much needed in that rural area. You know, so it's definitely needed there. The next slide here is non-residential properties between Farmville and Greenville. You see the yellow is our storage facility, and between Farmville and Greenville, all of these red dots are not necessarily commercial, but they are businesses, and I've gone here and have shown you. If you're familiar with that area, right here is the duck through, they just built that. They're getting ready, I think, talking about rezoning here for the property right next to that for commercial. There's auto sales lot there. There's two sixty-four auto sales, Flanagan Field Airport there, several churches on this road. The red dot is the, is where I live now. Where you see TD Sales, that's in a major curve as well, and Ballard's Crossroads Grill, also Andrew's Landscaping Business. Going up further towards Farmville, there's a medical products facility, and three other churches, and another, another thing, I'm sorry. So here's some pictures, and then just to finish up, we plan on having cameras fencing gate with entry code landscaping. It will match our current home, which will be tan and kind of black or brown. And then the building will have shrubbery and a black fence on the front with chain on the sides. And we do live next door, and we do care about the way it looks. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Hodges.
Do you have any questions for me?
And that's what I'm fixing to ask, I'm just asking the board.
Mr. Chairman, where's one other person that would like to speak?
One more?
Two more.
Two more? Okay. Let me see what, thank you.
You have to bear with me, I'm on oxygen, and when I get a little nervous, I'll start coughing, but please bear with me. My name is Ted Vanderford, and I had gotten up a petition, people, landowners in the area to sign it. I didn't make a copy for everybody, I'm sorry.
Then if you'll cite your address.
Yeah.
Sixty-seven forty-eight US thirteen is the property that I own, which is right across from Shannon and Stacy's, and my mom stays right next to that. And, you know, I've been there my whole life, except when I was in the Navy. And basically, I don't think it's a good idea, when they purchased the land, you'll see the deed, they agreed not to do anything commercial on the property. It's right there in the deed, but now they changed their mind. So, you know, they're going against what they agreed to to start with. I would say, would you want it next to your house? That's the big thing. You know, with my mom, traffic's bad. And like I say, they agreed in the deed, and I have a map with the landowners that have agreed to not want it, and highlighted the land, and you see the area that is, it's roughly fourteen different landowners. So thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask you a question? Mr. Danford?
Mr. Vanderford.
Mr. Danford, would you come back to the mic just a minute?
If you know, when did the Hodges acquire the property? When did they get it?
Roughly about two thousand and seven, or eight.
And when you say they, they agreed in their deed to not put a commercial use...
It's in the deed, I got a...
Well, I don't have the deed.
Okay.
So...
Can I see that?
Who, who gave them the deed? I mean, did you give them, did they buy it from you?
No, they bought it from the tire heirs.
Were you a party to a contract?
No, you could, this is public records.
Mr. Chairman, it says, says in this deed, which I assume is genuine, that this property will not be used, it'll be used only for farmland and residential purposes. I mean, that's a deed, I mean, that's a deed restriction. Anyway.
Any other questions for Mr. Danford? Thank you for now, sir. I believe I had one other speaker, and then I'm going to be asking someone to come back, okay?
My name is Gavin Vanderford.
I'm sorry?
My address, Gavin Vanderford. I'm the son of Monica and Ted Vanderford. I'm a volunteer with Bell Arthur and Farmville Fire Department, and I work for the City of Kenton Fire Department. And in regards to traffic, I didn't really come prepared, but on my phone, I have department statistics about traffic collisions specifically regarding the area. From Moy Turnage to Wesley Church Road, we've had a total of, we've had ten vehicle fires, trying to find the specific number, and we've had about two hundred and fifty-three motor vehicle accidents within that stretch of road. And if you compare, compare year statistics each year, it increases by at least five percent, and that's understandable considering how much the city of Greenville and the town of Farmville are growing. But I just wanted to add out there the statistics of all the motor vehicle accidents going out there, and Shannon wanted to say about how far back off the road they live, which is true, but, you know, not just thinking about our family or, you know, our friends, think about all the kids and all the people that live up and down that road that I see all the time. And, you know, I just, I'm with the rest of the group, I just don't, traffic's terrible out there. I've seen it firsthand, and I see it almost every other month, and I just, I don't think an increase of flow through that area would be a smart idea. But thank you for your time.
Thank you for Mr. Danford. I failed to get your address. What was your address?
Thirty-one eighty Ballard's Crossroads Road.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
I have one question.
Okay.
The stats that you quoted, that's an annual basis?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Six o'clock.
To our knowledge, do we have any other speakers?
Can I say one more thing?
Yes, ma'am, I was hoping you would, because I was going to ask you to come back.
First, do you have any questions?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Have you read the deed that you got?
I had actually forgotten about that. So when I bought that property in two thousand and three, two thousand and two, I think, it was also the tire estate across, which is where Ms. Humphrey bought, okay? Those restricted covenants ran with her land and my land, but she had hers removed, and I just didn't do it because it was just our section, we were the only section left of that whole estate, and those people have died, you know? And it just, it's our piece, it's our little piece, we control it. So if there's something I have to do to change that or whatever, I can do that, because we're the ones who own it, but, you know, she had that agreement too, and she had it removed.
Well, but you don't deny that you have an agreement, that that land that you acquired will always be used for residential or farmland, right?
I mean, I had honestly forgotten about it, because it wasn't supposed to have double wides or trailers on... I mean, I had honestly forgotten about it because it wasn't supposed to have double wides or trailers on it either, and she put a double wide on hers, and then we put a trailer on ours. It's just our land, so we own it, we'll own it forever, probably.
Well, as a member of this board, I'm not persuaded by any arguments against you except that one. And that's serious because that land I view that as being restricted, and everybody who buys land should be entitled to rely on that until that covenant is released, I believe.
Is there anything else you want to speak to?
I mean, that property is ours, I mean, we, I mean, that could be removed easily.
But wasn't the original grant, was it 44 acres? I don't remember. How much was the tire deed for? Do you know what it calls for? Can you tell me, David?
That's what I'm looking at. It looks like it's just for that 14.3 acre.
Yeah, it's just our property, our piece.
Right.
It did run with the whole piece of tire estate, though, and they had it removed, and I, I mean, I could have it removed.
Well, who else owns land that came from that 14 acres?
They had it removed.
Did they agree with your use?
They had it removed, their use on their piece, they had it removed.
So there's 14 acres left of the tire.
Are there some others here that wanted to speak? I think so.
I just wanted to say.
I need you to come.
You have to come to the mic, sir.
She indicated that when Mom and Dad bought the property, that that restriction was in their deed also. It is not. And I think you, I mean. When Mom and Dad signed the deed, it was not in there. And I got my part from them. So I think if you look up the deed for that piece, no restrictions were in that. Just wanted to clarify that.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I do have one question. If you were to develop your lot, which I understand is not developed right now, where would you locate your driveway?
It would be probably, there's... Can you pull up that? The lot that we own is that flag-shaped lot, and that driveway would be right there. Where it meets.
I'm sorry, we cannot see that.
We cannot see that one. There you go.
Where'd he go? That's the parcel right there that I own, and our driveway would be right here.
So we're looking at the very top edge of the monitor is your property?
Yes.
And then your driveway would come, enter the highway directly?
Yes.
At what point?
There.
So basically, in the curve as well?
Right in the curve.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I got a question for our attorney.
That's where I'm going to.
Where does the board stand as far as this coming up about being in the deed and everything? Do we still?
So I'll do my best to answer the question. So I, before you, wouldn't try to opine on the enforceability or not of this matter. Be, not be wise for me to do, I haven't looked at anything. What I would say is enforceability of covenants, there can be a whole host of things. They may, there may not be a party that exists that can enforce, there may or may not. There may sometimes covenants, you waive enforceability if you overlook certain things over a certain period of time. I'm not saying any of that applies here, I'm saying I don't know. What I would say for this board is, it's certainly a private property matter. The county would have no enforceability as far as whether or not this covenant is valid. With that being said, if it's something that this board thinks is somehow relevant or pertinent to your decision, you could give it whatever way you think's appropriate. And I understand that that may not be a direct answer, but that's about as best as I can offer. Happy to try to answer any follow-up questions that you or other members may have based off that.
I got a question. Would you agree that if we gave it, that we have the option of giving the applicant the ability to resolve any ques... Because we, as a board, we don't want to enforce an unenforceable document and hurt somebody else in the process. But as it stands right now, I agree with you, I don't know who else has, I don't know who else could possibly have an interest. But we are looking at a deed that says it won't be used for the use that she says she wants to use it for. And I certainly agree that that's waivable by everybody that does have an interest. But I can't sit here tonight and say that it has been.
I would agree that I cannot tell you if it's been waived or not.
Right.
But our duties will come back to us as a board as far as what we're looking at, up to the point that we're talking about a covenant, a restrictive covenant, if you would, if we thought that's what it was. But right now, our duties are to pass in, on this particular issue, to approve or deny. But with the criteria that's been required, it has met the requirements. And staff has recommended approval.
Staff certainly recommends approval. I don't know if James wants to give his opinion on the covenant, not from a legal matter, but how you could consider it. That's why I kind of couch it in. It may be something this board thinks is relevant to your analysis. I mean, the members who are on our subcommittee heard, y'all are in a legislative decision right now, you have a whole, kind of a whole universe of things that you can consider to your own personal desires. You're ultimately deciding whether or not you think this is a good idea or not. And somehow, if that covenant factors into that one way or the other, for your own personal reasons, you can give it whatever way you think is appropriate. And I don't, like I said, I don't know if James wants to speak to his opinion on it as far as how you reach your decision, but that's my legal take for you.
So in saying that, then, of course, right now, staff has recommended approval. And if we were to take our vote right now and we move to approve and move forward, that's one issue. If we, as a board, decide that we're gonna vote to deny this, I believe the next question is gonna be asked of us, from either you or James, is you need to give us a reason for why we're denying.
That is true, if the planning staff has recommended approval, and they have based a consistency statement and a reason with statement based off their recommendation. So if y'all were in favor of their recommendation, you typically adopt that statement as prepared. If you go against their recommendation and recommend denial, you need to adopt your own consistency statement. And if you'd like to talk about reasonableness, you can. You, as a planning board, aren't required to do reasonableness, the governing board is. So does that answer your question, Mr. Root?
The governing board being the commissioners, right?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Mr. Chairman? Yes, sir. You're in. Hang on, just a second. Let me recognize, James, just before you do, let me recognize one more speaker, okay?
My name is Monica Vanderford. Ted Vanderford's my husband. I was just gonna say that out of personal knowledge of the property, I've done a title search on it, and the only restrictions were on the Hodges, 14 acres, there were none on the Humphreys or the remainder of the original farm. We have spoken to Tire Family Farms, Inc., or LLC, whatever they are. They are still in business, and they did not give any permission to lift any restrictions. So I just wanted to pass that along.
Thank you, ma'am. Board members, any other questions or comments at this time before I ask Mr. Roots to see if he has any comments? Mr. Roots?
I really don't have anything to add to Jordan's, but I will just reiterate, this is a private restriction. Mr. McGloughorn is very familiar with this. Ben and I have just been in court about a similar situation, and just so the board is aware, staff and legal staff, we do not research these private restrictions because it's unenforceable by us. If we are made aware of it, we would advise the private property owners. But again, it can be factored into your decision, your legislative decision. You could even consider this as a condition to this conditional district rezoning, that that be resolved. So that's just another option for you to consider tonight, if the deed restriction is a major issue for your consideration. I'll lay that out.
Thank you, sir. Ben, any comments?
I have nothing else, if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Any questions for the board?
Yeah, I'll just say one more thing, Mr. Chairman. And that is, that perhaps if the Hodges aren't the only ones, which we don't know because we haven't checked the title, but relying on what she said, then they're the only ones that could be hurt by the violation. Except if they deed this property to somebody else, that person's gonna be hurt by it, perhaps. But so what I'm saying is, if there are not any remaining owners of the original grant, then, you know, I don't have any problem with it.
Okay. So at this point, I need to close the public comments. And then the chair will entertain a motion. And again, taking into consideration what we've heard from our county attorney, and also from Mr. Roots, he enlightened me with just with a statement right then that he made. So the chair will entertain a motion on this agenda item.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Hardy.
I recommend that we take the board's recommendation with the stipulation that she has that removed from her deed.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Second. And I have a second. The motion being that we approve it, this plant with the... State your motion again, Mr. Hardy. Mr. Hardy, state your motion again.
We accept staff's recommendation to approve the property with stipulation that they had that clause on the title removed about, you know, no commercial property.
And that is the motion, and you agree to that as a second?
I haven't yet.
No, I've seconded it. They signed that deed in good faith and expect them to withhold that, you know, uphold that.
Come here, sir.
What would be the timeframe on this?
Don't let it go to that depth.
Sorry, what was the question?
What would be the timeframe on this?
That's the condition that's added, that will be presented to the commissioners along with the other conditions of the approval that we went through. I would assume before development may begin, is that probably, does that answer? Yeah, so before we can issue a permit then?
Yep, okay. All right, any other comments before we vote?
It's been seconded?
It's been, the motion answered, motion by Mr. Hardy's second, by Mr. Austin. All in favor of the motion, let it be known by raising of the right hand. All opposed, like sign.
John, did you oppose?
No.
The motion is approved. And we will move this one forward with that stipulation. Okay. Ben, I believe you have agenda number, item number seven.
Yes, sir, I did just want to reiterate for everybody in attendance that that will go before the April fair or the commissioner meeting at 6 o'clock. Our second rezoning this evening has been submitted by F and A Construction LLC. This is a request to rezone 7.16 acres of property located on the western side of NC 11, south of its intersection with NC 30. It's parcel number 72622, from rural agricultural to general commercial. And unlike the one we just heard in some of the recent rezonings, this is not a conditional district, so it is just from RA to a straight general commercial zoning district. Location map, you see again, it's located just south of the town of Bethel, on NC 11, south of its intersection with NC 30. A couple of site pictures of the property. You see this, it's kind of overgrown, but this is the site from NC 11. And I will mention, when we did our field trip, our planning board field trip on Monday, this property has been cleared since then, so it does look a little bit different. They did go through and bush hog the entire parcel. This is looking north back towards the town of Bethel, looking south back towards Greenville. This is a commercial property just south of the proposed rezoning area. This is owned by the same folks who did submit the application and the parcel we're looking at. Again, an existing commercial parcel. This is agricultural land, kind of adjacent and across the highway from the subject property. This is a commercial use up just north of the subject property. It's in the town of Bethel's ETJ, it's a solar farm company. And then there is a residence directly across the highway. The comprehensive land use plan does designate this area as rural residential and ag. I did want to note that in our envision of Pitt County 2045 plan that we've been reviewing and the board of commissioners is gonna be reviewing next week and holding a public hearing, did kind of pull down that commercial. As you see now, almost all of it is outside of that commercial area, it's shown here. But if that plan is adopted, as will be presented to them, we did kind of pull down some of that commercial in this area. The rural residential agricultural area or designation is intended to include low-density residential, single-family, site-built and manufactured homes, agriculture, forestry, churches, very limited commercial, office or public institutional uses meeting locational criteria. Again, locational criteria for non-residential uses within this land use category would include frontage and access to a major state highway or secondary road, location at a major intersection, proximity to similar uses, and spatial separation from non-compatible uses such as existing residential development. And uses will have to develop on product set of tank systems. Existing uses, I kind of just touched on this, but we have the one commercial just south of it and the residence directly across the highway. Otherwise, everything in this area in the county's jurisdiction is undeveloped or agricultural. The zoning in the area, besides that one commercial use, everything is rural agricultural. And the general commercial zoning district is primarily intended to accommodate a range of retail, service, office, limited wholesale and moderate-density multifamily residential uses in areas that have access to major thoroughfares and the necessary utilities to support such development. The property is located with the highway corridor overlay district, which will require extra screening and buffering for that overlay and the zoning ordinance. Planning staff does find that this request is consistent with the comprehensive land use plan. The area requested for rezoning is designated as rural residential agricultural on the future land use map, and the subject property is adjacent to an existing commercially zoned property. In addition, there are existing commercial land uses within close proximity to the subject property. Planning staff also finds that this request is reasonable and is in the public interest due to the site's location along with major thoroughfare, NC 11 north, and the location of other existing general commercial zone properties within close proximity to the site. Additionally, the subject property is located within the highway corridor overlay district, and any proposed commercial use would be required to provide additional screening and buffering from surrounding residential uses. Staff does recommend approval of the request. And again, public comments will be entertained by the planning board. The board will make a recommendation to the board of commissioners, who will hold a public hearing at their April 3 meeting. And I will turn it over to you, Chairman, for public comment.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, could you repeat what you said about how our 2045 plan mixed into this? What was it you said that happened?
Yes, sir, so our comprehensive land use plan, the future land use map shown here, it has a little... So our comprehensive land use plan, the future land use map shown here, it has a little bubble coming south of the town of Bethel. In our proposed future land use map that the commissioners will be hearing and this board has been involved with, that bubble kind of drops further south to include more property, because we see that kind of as almost like a commercial node, more or less. And if this was submitted in six months, the point was that currently it's in that rural residential ag, but if that plan is approved and that map is approved as presented, there it's more commercial there, and it would be designated as that commercial. I did just want to note this, and that's something we've been working on.
At this time, we will open this meeting up to public comments on item number seven, FNA Construction rezoning. I don't have anyone listed on my list for speakers. Is anyone? If not, at this time, I'll close this public comment session. Comments from the board? The board, the chair will entertain a motion on this item.
I'll make a motion that we approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Davenport that we approve, or a second by Mr. Hardy. Any comments? All in favor of the motion, let it be raised with the right hand. All opposed, like sign. The motion carries. We do grant conditional approval. Mr. Gooby.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Give Ben just a few minutes break here and present this request. It's a rezoning by Phil Lewis. The request is rezoned approximately 10 acres of his property. It's two parcels, 68711 and 08760. It's located at the northwestern corner at the intersection of US-13 and Bell Arthur Road, and the request is to go from rural residential to general commercial. Its location map here, you see that the site is just west of the bypass. It's just basically one parcel over from the on-ramp and/or the interchange, right there at the corner of Bell Arthur Road to the north. Davenport Farm Road comes in from the south, and it creates that intersection. This is the view of the site from 13. You see it's primarily just agricultural land now. There's also a house on the corner, which I'll show in just a second. This is a view back towards the north on Bell Arthur Road, and this is on Bell Arthur Road, if you're looking back towards that intersection with US-13. And you can see, come in the background, the Davenport Farm Road overpass that goes over the bypass, and to the left is a new convenience store that's been built there last year. This is a view back to the east, is if you're heading back towards Greenville on 13. You can see the overpass from the southwest bypass there in the background. And this would be looking to the west, if you're heading towards Farmville. So this site is just up, is a couple miles up the road from the Hodges rezoning, but again, this is more closer to that interchange and the bypass. This is the house that I mentioned that's on the property currently, so it will also be included in the commercial designation. So I understand that that won't, once it's rezoned, that won't be used for residential purposes anymore, that they're going to convert that into something else. And then, as I mentioned, there's the new convenience store that's located across the street on the other corner of the duct through, and then there's one residence across 13 from this property. And then this is just another adjacent property that's the other corner of Davenport Farm Road, which you see in the background. The southwest bypass land use plan does designate it as neighborhood commercial. So you see that whole area is included in that pink color, which is the neighborhood commercial. That designation, per that plan, says it's comprised of small-scale commercial development in rural or neighborhood areas, and that typically would include convenience, retail, restaurants, and some offices. Existing land uses, you see there are some larger lot residential uses to the east and then some to the nor, or sorry, to the west, and then some to the north on Bell Arthur. I also have Emerywood subdivision, which is on the south on the other side of 13, and that red, you can see some red there to the, that's the new duct through. And then back towards Greenville, there's some more commercial, and then to the west, there's more commercial down here where the old Silver Bullet, Silver Bullet used to be, I think it's now a sweepstakes. And there's also a car dealership down that way. Zoning, the property is currently zoned RR. You see the red next to it, that's the new duct through. That actually came before this board about two years ago. This site is about double what that site was. That was about five acres, this one again is 10. That commercial district is intended to accommodate a range of retail, service, office, wholesale, moderate-density multifamily residential uses in those areas that have access to major thoroughfares and utilities to support that development. The property is also located in the southwest bypass highway corridor overlay, so it will be subject to some additional screening and buffering requirements based off that being in that overlay. Staff does find that the request is consistent with the land use plan, given its proximity to the interchange, as well as its designation as neighborhood commercial on the future land use map. I will find the request is reasonable and in the public interest, because it is located in proximity to that interchange. It's also located in an area that's appropriate, or has been determined to be appropriate by that plan, for a small-scale commercial development. And again, also, it will be subject to the requirements of the highway corridor overlay screening and buffering along both the adjoining property lines and the rights of way. So with that, Mr. Chair, we do recommend approval of the request. I'd like to entertain public comments. For the make a recommendation, this will also go to the commissioners on April 3rd.
Thank you, sir. At this time, the meeting will be open to public comments on this particular agenda item number eight. Are there any speakers? I don't show any again that have signed up to speak. So this time, I will close this public comment session, and look to the board for any comments or a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move the approval of the petition.
Motion to approve by Mr. McGloughorn.
Second.
A second by Mr. Hardy. Any comments before we vote? All in favor of that motion, let it be known by raising the right hand. All opposed, like sign. The motion carries. We grant approval.
And back again for our final rezoning request this evening. The applicant, Marjorie L. LLC, has submitted a request to rezone 1.41 acres of their property. That's parcel number 84321. It's located on the southern corner of the intersection of Page Road and Mills Road, and the request is to rezone from rural agricultural conditional district to rural residential. The site location, you see, is just south of the city of Greenville, up at NC-43, just east of Hollywood Crossroads and DH Conley High School. Some site pictures of the property. You see they're currently just vacant agricultural, there's some trees. They, I just want to give a brief background, actually. In 2015, this property was rezoned to RA conditional district for the approval of a landscaping business, DT Carwin, you may be familiar with that. So with that rezoning, it was for the entire parcel. At this point in time, they are looking to rezone back to RR, as I mentioned. So since that rezoning in 2015 was conditional, they have to come through this process. Just didn't want to touch on that. This is looking back west to Hollywood Crossroads, and then looking east down Mills Road. Couple of residents across the street, as well as a manufactured home park across the street. And as I mentioned, there is a commercial landscaping business located kind of towards the rear of the property. The site area, you see the land use plan, the future land use map does designate this as suburban residential. The suburban residential designation is intended to include residential land uses, including single-family and manufactured home subdivisions and manufactured home parks at densities of one to four dwelling units per acre, limited multifamily, commercial, office, light industrial, and public institutional uses meeting locational criteria, and land designated as suburban residential as distinguished by the greater potential for development and the inclusion of a broader range of land uses. Locational criteria for these uses is, for this category, would include frontage and access to a major state highway or secondary road, location at a major intersection, proximity to similar uses, and spatial separation from non-compatible uses such as existing residential development. And again, existing land uses, you see here that kind of the red, erector, the rear of that property is zoned commercial for that, or it's commercial use for that business, as well as just the residences and the other undeveloped agricultural uses in the area. The zoning map, you see everything out there is pretty much rural residential, except for some commercial uses on 43. The dark green, this is the subject property that was again rezoned in 2015 for that conditional district. The owner actually came back a few years ago and rezoned this flag lot back to RR and kind of went through the same process that we're going through this evening. And again, we are looking at this front area along Mills Road tonight. The rural residential district is primarily intended to accommodate low-density, single-family residential uses and their associated, supporting public and institutional uses in areas that generally do not have access to public or community water and sewer systems. Planning staff does find that this request is consistent with the Pitt County Comprehensive Land Use Plan, because the site meets locational criteria for the proposed zoning district within the suburban residential land use category. In addition, the site is located adjacent to existing rural residential zoned properties, and staff also finds that this request is reasonable and is in the public interest because the majority of the surrounding properties are similarly zoned as rural residential. In addition, the property was previously zoned rural residential prior to being rezoned to rural agricultural conditional district in 2015. This request will restore the property's previous zoning designation. Staff does recommend approval, and again, comments will be entertained prior to making recommendations to the commissioners for their April 3rd public hearing.
Our meeting is now open to public comments, and I do have one, Mr. Steven Spruill. He would like to speak.
Good evening, board members. My name is Steve Spruill. My address is 1204 East Right Road in Greenville. As Ben pointed out, this request is consistent with the land use plan, and we're kind of just going back to what it was before. If anyone has any questions, I will do my best to try to answer them.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Spruill from the board? Thank you, sir. I do close the public comments, and at this time, what is the pleasure of the board?
I'm in motion, and we accept.
We have a motion for conditional approval by Mr. Don Brown. I have a second.
Second.
I have a second from Mr. Hardy. Any comments from the board?
Speak up.
All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying ahh. I'm sorry, raising the right hand. Be consistent, Steve. All opposed, like sign. The motion is passed.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ben, I believe you earned your keep tonight, didn't you?
All right, Mr. Chair. We do have two text amendments for you tonight. One is a request from a citizen, and the other is a staff-initiated request. So we'll start with the one from citizens, from Mr. George L. Shaver Jr. His request was to amend the Pitt County zoning ordinance to allow commercial automobile parking and storage of equipment in the RA zoning district. When we received the request, we reviewed it, and what Mr. Shaver is, what he would like to do is to have a place where he can park semi-trucks and other sort of heavy machinery. And so when we were reviewing the request, we didn't feel like it was necessarily appropriate to amend that commercial automobile parking, which is just a permitted use in the general commercial and heavy commercial districts. We felt like it was more appropriate to just give it its own use, and so we've developed what we call a, or what we're proposing to create is oversized vehicle parking commercial. And we're also proposing some specific standards for this use, and so we'll go through that pretty quickly. First is to amend table 5-1, the list of permitted uses, and that would be to actually add the use to the ordinance. As you see, we're considering, we call it oversized vehicle parking. It would be permitted with a conditional district in the RA district, rather than permitting it outright. And the reasoning for that is because these trucks and this equipment can be loud, you have diesel motors, you have large, heavy machinery coming in and out. If it's surrounded by, you know, RA is a residential district, and so if you're surrounded by homes, it may have some noise impact, may have, you might have issues with the traffic, with, you know, just any kind of negative impact that could be associated with just having these types of vehicles and equipment nearby to these homes. So we felt like there's been a lot of discussion about context sensitivity over the last couple months, so we felt like it was just most appropriate that this would be done as a conditional district. So just like with sand mines, and some of these other uses that you were hearing now that used to be special use permits, this type of use we're proposing would come before this board and then the county commissioners also. So then, in the general commercial and heavy commercial districts, as well as the industrial districts, it would be permitted with the development standards. So they would still have to meet the standards that we're proposing, but they wouldn't necessarily have to go through a public hearing if it's zoned for that already. So the standards we're proposing, again, where it's required, would be to approve it as a conditional zoning district in the RA district, permitted by right of development standards in those commercial and industrial districts. Use separation, where any oversized vehicle should be parked a minimum of 50 feet from an adjoining residentially zoned property, not counting the property that it's on if it's in the RA district. So if it's already zoned RA, obviously, we wouldn't have it set back off itself. And then a minimum of 100 feet from any residence, church, school, or public institution. The minimum area we're proposing required for these facilities would be two acres. We're also proposing to require screening from adjoining properties by a buffer yard. We do require that already in the ordinance, so it'd be a 10-foot buffer yard with some combination of trees and shrubs for screening. Proposing security fencing, minimum of six feet in height along the entire perimeter of the facility. And then some restrictions on the noise. So any noise should be in compliance with the requirements of the county's noise ordinance, and should not disrupt any adjacent land uses. In those residential districts, we're also proposing to add that any vehicles that are parked should not remain idling or generate any other noise while parked that would otherwise disrupt those adjacent land uses. And the restriction on that would be between those hours of 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM. And that's also consistent with hours in the noise ordinance. The noise ordinance itself, between 10:00 AM and 7:00 AM, it drops down the threshold for noise, so there's a lower threshold for how loud something can be, and so that is consistent with those times. Also requiring that parking services would not be required to be paved necessarily, but they would have to be improved, graded, drained, stabilized, and constructed with an all-weather surface, whether it's gravel or crush-and-run, to help minimize dust and erosion. And then also in those residential districts prohibiting some activities, like keeping junk cars, keeping scrap materials on the property, also fuel sales. We want to make sure this doesn't necessarily turn into a truck stop, it's just a parking area for these types of vehicles, and then also any automotive repair services. So we also need to add some working definitions for these uses. Again, as I mentioned, the ordinance already has commercial automobile parking, but it doesn't define what that is. So we're proposing to define that as essentially temporary parking, hourly, daily, or monthly contractor fee basis, but it'd be for passenger vehicles, so pretty much any normal vehicle designed to move people, as opposed to goods or services. And then for oversized vehicle parking, that would be for any vehicle or combination of vehicles, including trailers, which is seized 20 feet in length, seven feet in width, or eight feet in height. An example of that would include semi-trucks and trailers, whether they hitched or unhitched, box trucks, moving vans, campers, RVs, trailer boats, and also heavy equipment and machinery. So we've talked with Mr. Shaver, and we feel like that would kind of help suit his needs as well for what he's proposing. Also with that, we feel like the proposed amendments are consistent with the goals of the Comprehensive Land Use Plan, to maintain an effective jurisdiction-wide land use program, and staff does recommend approval of the amendments with a proposed immediate effective date. And so just like with the commissioners, with the rezoning requests, commissioners are scheduled to hear this on April 3rd, and with that, Mr. Chair, we'd like to take public comments. I know Mr. Shaver's here, and I think he's got some other folks that might want to speak as well, might too.
Thank you, sir. Again, we will open our meeting up to public comments, and Mr. Shaver, do you come to the mic? Give us your name and address, please, sir.
My name is George Shaver. I live at 1211 Eastwood Lane in Winterfield. I currently operate a parking facility in Winterfield for commercial trucks. We have about 60 trucks that park there. There's a dire need for our local truck drivers to have somewhere to park. A lot of our truck drivers live in small residential areas, and the cities have passed ordinances. Greenville, Aiden, Winterfield, and Farmville has ordinances that does not allow them to park in those areas. We started our parking lot three years ago. We filled up within three months. I have nobody that ever leaves, so I have no more space. I have nobody that ever leaves, so I have no more space. Mr. Savage owns 21 acres on the Pecoson Road where he used to store 1,000 containers and over 300 trailers. Since he sold his company, that land is vacant, so we decided to start parking trucks out there. We will have aerial lights once we get permitted. We will have camera systems. There was a couple of things I didn't understand that he showed on the height. These trucks are 13/6 at least. I didn't, I didn't see what his height measurements were. I just want to make sure we do meet within the requirements. But I have letters from all the chiefs of police. I have a letter from the Greenville chief, the Aiden chief, the Winterville chief. I also have a petition here of 88 signatures from people that live in the area that this is a much-needed project, and I just ask for your support. Thank you for your time.
Any questions for Mr. Shaver while he's there?
And we do not allow trucks to park out there and run their engines. These are all local residents that have, they stay gone, some of them stay gone two or three days, some of them stay gone six weeks. They come home, they need somewhere to park. That's all we're asking.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time.
Mr. Tommy Savage?
Good evening. Tommy Savage, 1180 Pecoson Road. I've been running a business there 53 years. It's one and a quarter miles from my business to where the storage lot is. I bought that land 15 years ago, and somewhere you have a picture of the land when it was loaded. I would like the board to see that.
If I could, I just want to, I just want to say, this is not a partial-specific request. This is an amendment to the ordinance, so we're not prepared to speak on an individual parcel tonight. We are simply requesting or amending the ordinance to allow this type of use that would then come back for a site-specific request. So I don't have the pictures of the property itself, because we're not, that's not what this request is for.
Okay. See, what you were saying while ago, I only understood half of it, and a lot of this stuff, I'm a little country boy, raised in the pine woods, that's it. I started out with nothing, and I have grown. And we don't want it rezoned. There's no need of it. The county is begging for a place to park trucks. We can't do without them. Everything you people have got on, everything you eat tonight, this building, every piece of it came in on the truck. We can't do without trucks. And Mr. Ted Saul told me that Greenville has a ordinance, you can't park. But he told me, what am I supposed to do with them? Man comes in to bring a load of gifts for the county, he's got nowhere to park. I can't tell him, go home. So we are providing a badly needed service. I have serviced the community for 53 years, right out there on that road. And that service is run from Virginia to South Carolina to Greensboro to out in the ocean, go out there and work on stuff on boats. So I've been servicing this county basically all my life. I'm 80 years old, started that business in 69. Been there ever since. We don't help from anybody but non-lackstand at the bank. What it boils down to is we're trying to provide a service that will enhance the county, that will help the county. They talk about the zoning and so forth. The county is full of businesses that are operating according to these people. They operate the business out of the house, out of the backyard, whatever. County's full of, right down to the coast of it. It starts on 903 and goes to Greene County. There is, I think I counted today, six or seven businesses that are operating out of the back hills and so forth. And I'm not trying to hurt these people. I don't care what they do. I honestly don't care. If we took a piece of scrap wood laying, you showed a, when somebody showed a picture of a piece that had been cut down over there by Bethel, that tree is probably 10, 12 foot tall, that's what that probably looked like when I bought it.
Good deal. Mr. Savage, thank you, sir. I appreciate all your comments, and we appreciate the service that you're providing, but in this particular instance tonight, what we're trying to do, what we've got to do tonight is to approve this verbiage that will go to the county commissioners and we see that that's going to happen, and then for what you're talking about right now, someone will be bringing that back to us in the future.
Okay.
So we won't be making any decisions on that particular plan tonight.
May I ask what you mean by verbiage?
The revision that we're talking about, adding to our ordinance, the words that he just read to us just a moment ago.
See, I didn't understand half of what he was talking about or saying. Like I said, I'm just a little boy coming out of the pine woods over there, and I've been there all my life. Some of these terms y'all use, I don't know what you're talking about.
And I do believe that once you see us complete our work, that it will be to your advantage.
I do appreciate it.
And we appreciate you.
And thank you.
Thank you, sir.
For your time, George and so forth, and hope they work with you.
Good deal. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for Eric.
Yes, sir.
If we approve a set of ground rules, which I understand is what you're proposing, will there be any opportunity in the site-specific application because it's a conditional use to deal with either lighting or anything that is somehow unique to a neighborhood?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That's sort of the reason for why we're requesting it to be a conditional district is because, you know, we completely agree with Mr. Shaver, there is a need for this in the county. We, our staff has been contacted probably, not just by Mr. Shaver, probably three or four other people who want to do this same type of use in the county. It just happens he's the one that has the most immediate need and is proceeding with this request. And the area where he's located, his neighbors may not have an issue with it, but again, this is a countywide regulation. This is intended to apply to any business that wants to open in the RA district. So while his neighbors may not have a problem, the next guy that comes in, in another part of the county in RA, their neighbors may not want it and may have an issue with it. And where he has rules where he doesn't allow them to idle overnight, those folks may not. And so we want to make sure that everybody is sort of under the same rules and is following the same regulations.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Is it eight feet or is it 14 feet?
Well, the way the definition reads, it says, these vehicles include, including trailers, which exceeds 20 feet in length, seven feet in width, or eight feet in height. So basically, if it's taller than eight feet in height, we consider it an oversized vehicle, and it would fall under this requirement. Now, it's not to say they couldn't park anything smaller than that, but that's just a general guideline to use to say, this is larger than just a SUV or even a big old jacked-up pickup truck, you know? Some of those trucks with the lifts on them, they're probably over eight feet in height themselves, but they are a passenger vehicle, they're not necessarily an oversized vehicle. So this is just more of a guideline to go by.
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
For Mr. Gooby and for everybody, really, I'm trying to envision in the use separation area, essentially a truck stop being 100 feet from my house, or my church, or my children's school. I'm just, I'm not sure if that's enough. I don't, I really don't know. I'm trying to, I'm asking everybody, does that seem like enough from your house to be? The whole idea, I agree with 100%. I know truck drivers personally who are having this problem, so I agree with it. I'm just, I mean, we want to consider, is that distance enough from your house, from your doorstep?
Right. Again, this is just a proposal. This is what we have proposed. This board is free. If you feel like the 100 feet is not enough, you certainly decide to change it or increase it. That's just, like I said, that was just our staff recommendation, and it's somewhat consistent with some of the other requirements in the ordinance, particularly like with solar farms. There's restrictions for the inverters, for how close they can be to the property line, and then also how far they have to be from a house. And so it's somewhat consistent with that type of use. But certainly if the board feels like that's not sufficient, would be welcome to hear what y'all's recommendations are.
That was a good point. That's some of the things I'm not sure of. If everybody else seems that that is sufficient, so let me know.
May I speak again, please?
Sir?
May I speak again, please?
Yes, sir, for two minutes.
All right.
Come to the, come to the mic, please, sir.
Greenville Utilities is going to install our light system, and they're putting lights up that will shatter the houses in the ways they want. All the light, just like these right here, you've got a blinder on these lights. The lights they're going to put up for us will be the same way, they'll have blinders on them. And I'm going to say at least 90% of the neighbors have privacy fences up, and from their privacy fence is on the line, and the tail end of a trailer will be approximately 50 feet from their privacy fence, because we've got a burn like that. When I bought that property, the people in the mobile homes, they use that for trash Had to get rid of all that stuff, and I buried most of it in the burn. So that takes care of a lot of what he was asking. I just, I just wanted to throw that in.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Got any more questions? You've got a question?
No, not that.
Hey, we're good. Thank you, sir.
No, if Mr. Gooby says that's consistent with other things, then, okay, that's good enough for me.
As we have no other speakers, I will close this public comments. Come back and realize that what we're doing is making a motion that we're going to recommend this to the board of commissioners with our...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to have some additional text added to this, and it does regard lighting, that the lighting must be in the form of a downlighting and just to provide safety and security to the people who are parking their vehicles there and using the facility and not to shine excessive light out into the neighborhood.
If I might add, Mr. Ozon, our ordinance already does have that requirement for lighting. Any non-residential use has, if they're providing lighting, it has to be what they call a full cutoff light, so that means there's no light, no light can shine up above the light or the equipment of the light, and everything has to shine down and can't have any glare on the surrounding properties. So we do already have that.
So that's already taken care of.
Yes, sir.
Great.
And what we'll do is when, if it's approved and they submit a site plan, we'll also require a lighting plan that shows that.
Perfect.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments? Okay, Chair, we'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion, we take staff recommendation.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Hardy and a second, Mr. Forbes, that we do approve this request to move forward. All in favor of that motion, let it be known by raising the right hand. All opposed, like sign.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And like I said, just a reminder about it is going to go back to Commissioner Langley on the 3rd, so that'll go to the commissioners for a public hearing on April 3rd.
Yes, sir. Okay.
So our next amendment, this is actually a staff-initiated amendment. This is really to address a couple of items that we've identified just for consistency purposes, also to clarify some things, things that have popped up when we've been enforcing the ordinance over the last couple of years. First is, just recently, we realized that for landfill uses, what is in the use table is not consistent within, with the development standards for those uses. So for landfill construction and demolition, land clearing and inert debris, and sanitary solid waste, those uses, when you look at their development standards in Section 8, it says they're required to have a conditional district, just like what we talked about with the trucking and also with, you know, conditional district rezonings. So they are required, under those standards, it says they're required to have in all their districts. But we went back to the table, and it said it was only required in the general industrial to meet development standards. So we're fixing this, our proposal is to fix it so that a landfill would have to get a conditional zoning district established in all those districts that they're permitted in. The second is in regards to the skirting that we require on manufactured homes. Currently, we require, once a mobile home is set up and it's approved for occupancy, so building inspection goes out, they do the final inspections on the setup, they issue a certificate of occupancy, they issue an electrical certificate that gets the power cut on. The residents of that home have 60 days from that date to install the skirting around the bottom of the home. But what we're finding is that we are, we're spending a lot of time on those properties that don't come into compliance within 60 days to bring them into compliance. Typically, it takes about one to three months to bring them into compliance, and it's about 13% of those homes that are approved that aren't in compliance after 60 days. So we've talked with our inspections office, they are in agreement that that underpinning could be checked and approved prior to that approval for occupancy. So when they go out and do their final inspections, that underpinning would have to be installed, they could remove a section so they can still get up under the house, do the inspections they need to under there for the setup, and then replace that section, get their CO, get occupied, and then we don't have to continually chase some of these folks to get them into compliance. So for Sections 8 WW, again, we're proposing to remove that 60-day requirement. It'd be prior to approval for occupancy by Pitt County inspections, and then also the same in the R40 district for manufactured homes, that underpinning would have to be installed prior to approval. So we thought these amendments are also consistent with the goals of the County Comprehensive Land Use Plan, and staff does recommend also approval with an immediate effective date. The commissioners would be scheduled to hold a public hearing also for this on April 3, and we'd like to entertain any public comments.
And I would ask at this time if there are any public comments, so I'll open this session for public comments. Seeing that, we close this session of public comments. Board, your comments? You have a motion?
I'm moved to approve the, I mean, the text as proposed.
Second, Don Brown.
Motion by Mr. Forbes, second by Mr. Brown, that we approve staff recommendation. Any comments from the board? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by raising the right hand. All opposed, like sign. The motion passes.
All right, and the last item I have for you tonight, Mr. Chair, is just a very quick update on our county land use plan, our proposed envisioned Pitt County 2045 plan. As you remember, last month, you held a public hearing, recommended approval for the plan. That plan is going to the Board of County Commissioners for adoption on Monday, so it's March 20. And following the discussion last month, we did go through and make some changes to the plan. There was, again, a lot of talk about the context sensitivity, adding some more recommendations for that. recommendations for that. So we have added that. We've also added some graphics in terms of trying to show them the things you can consider, how things can be laid out. The things you can look at would be, you know, limit, size limitations on buildings, non-residential, of course, things like additional buffering, transportation improvements, because that'd be coordinated with DOT. Then any other kind of unique aspects of the site that need to be preserved, frontage requirements, and then anything like the parking and the location of that. And then also some things to consider would be additional amendments to the zoning ordinance for, for adding some more requirements for some of these things to, to consider. Then also if we need to conduct any kind of training to educate the board, educate the commissioners, or even the public, or developers on how to consider these things, we can do that as well. And that's, that's all been included in the plan since, since that time. So with that, that final, what we consider the final draft of the plan is available online now, so you can go on there, review it. There's a place to leave comments. Glad to answer any questions, though. But again, like I said, Monday, hopefully we will get an approval and get a new plan in place that we're looking at May 1st.
Any questions for Mr. Gooby from the board? Job well done.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Rhodes?
Yes, sir. Two things. Again, thank you for your service tonight. You guys have been champions in getting through this long agenda, and also thank you for serving as our steering committee on the Envision Pitt County 2045. That is a remarkable plan. We hope that the commissioners do endorse that at our meeting on Monday night. Real quickly, a couple of items. First, a good news item on page 87 of your agenda. We did retain our Class 8 community rating system. And what does that mean? That means the county has put in measures, mitigation measures, and extra protection for folks that are locating businesses or homes in the flood plain. And in so doing that, anyone that locates there and meets those requirements are eligible for a 10% reduction on their flood insurance premium. So that's a good news item for those people that decide to live in those flood-prone areas, but they have to meet our extra protection, in particular, the two-foot free boards. So if the base flood elevation is at a certain level, the finished floor elevation's got to be at least two, two foot above that. So that's just one of the ideas that we put in place, and that was put in place about 20 years ago after Hurricane Floyd. A couple of other things, I did want to bring you up to date, if you didn't see it, that your conditional district rezoning for the group home that was proposed on NC 30 was denied by the board when they dealt with it on their February 20th meeting. And then the final item, just so you know, one of those hidden items or activities that our staff is involved with is E911 addressing. We maintain the road signs. More importantly, we also update and add any new E911 addressing out in the unincorporated part of the county and all the municipalities except for the city of Greenville. So just one example, we do have to get involved with some road name changes from time to time. That was included in your package for the town of Farmville, just an idea of some other activities that we're involved with. Some other informational items in there, and again, thank you for your service, especially tonight. That's all we've got, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes.
James.
James.
I'd like to thank you and your department for going back with the field trips, because it really has helped me when you're looking at something that you're going to sit up here and talk about and make your decisions.
Thank you for that, Mr. Hardy. And again, we invite everybody out, just, we've got some other items coming to you next month. So if you have an opportunity to join us on the field trip, please come along. We try to get you out there and back safely, number one, and as quickly as possible. So please join us if you get a chance. Thank you.
Good deal. Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Any comments from the board? Mr. Rhodes, let me just say again, too, and follow up what Mr. Hardy just had to say, I appreciate the work that you and your staff do. Appreciate everything you do. Mr. Smith, appreciate you, sir, being here. And I might recognize one other young man there that I should know, so we're glad to have you. You've been a trooper tonight, also.
Thank you, sir. So I'm the Assistant County Attorney. And so with Mr. Smith, I guess, yeah.
I guess I'm, I guess I'm pushing you for something here, aren't I?
I am, my time with the county is a little bit short. I'm going to be leaving at the end of April. And so with that, Matt's been in my, uh-
Is that right?
Yes. End of April. James was laughing at me, so I'm sorry. End of April, so Matt's been in my office for almost a year now, and so he may or may not be the face for y'all at the planning board going forward. But happy, bit of pleasure working with y'all over the years, and I'll be here next month, so just off there.
Thank you again for all that you do for us, okay? Thank you, sir. Other comments? This meeting is adjourned.